Tonight's meeting is 7:03. Select Board meeting to order. All but Christine Duhoe are present. And let's start with the legislative.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to start with appointments. And I'll leave this to Mike, the appointment of Joe Mullins.
We desperately need our help in the building department with all the construction that's going on. And Joe Mullins worked for us previously as the local inspector. And we're fortunate to have him come back in to work on a part-time basis to help nick out with the inspections.
Is that just a general contracting inspector? It's no specialty of electrical?
No, just...
A general inspector? I don't mean not diminish his role by calling him a general.
Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, I actually want to apologize, we had a fourth candidate for the Traffic Study Committee, Rob Welch, and I apologize that he's not on the list, but he is actually one of the folks that have requested to be on this committee. We do only have three at-large positions, so we have four candidates. And I'd like to ask Steve Hornsby, who is going to be the representative from the Select Board on this committee, to discuss further.
Yeah, you know, I'm okay with putting this off to the next meeting if everybody else wants to. Otherwise, I mean, I could pick three out of the four, all four, I know are interested in assisting the town with this, so I guess I'll put it to three else if you want.
Madam Chair, and it's really just a question of the town manager probably. What would the harm be appointing all four? I know we designed it with three, three at-large.
Right, we designed it with three so that we'd have an odd number committee, not an even number in case any votes come up.
That would make it ten individuals instead of nine.
Can we make one of them an alternate?
I would think that would be a good idea.
Right, because this is one of those, this is not a quick committee, this is going to be tackling something, and I know all four of these individuals really want to kind of contribute, and I think that would be a nice way.
Okay, excellent.
So maybe with that in mind, you know, we can nominate Robert Kimball, Ralph Stefanelli, and Rob Welch, and George as the, George as the alternate. So I'll make that motion.
And I would second that motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, just before we, or Madam Chair, sorry. So a couple things. So we, I think we should vote on each one of these individuals individually, rather than voting on them as a group to be part of it. I think we would do that for any other committee. And then I think, secondly, would the alternate have voting power, or would they just? So two people show up one night, two of the appointees show up.
There's no quorum.
If the alternate would only be able to fill in if one of the other three wasn't going to be there.
Okay, and they would have, they would be able to vote, so they wouldn't be there just to share information with other committees or anything like that, they would actually have a voting stake in it. Okay.
The alternate, for more people, Madam Chair, the alternate, I believe, just would be like the EDC, it keeps the committee moving, right? We never want to be, we see it with the ZBA a lot because it's a committee, it's a small committee, but we see those alternates stepping in. Without alternates, the ZBA probably couldn't get that work done, so.
Okay, so I would suggest that we vote on each one of the candidates individually to be on the position and have one of them voted on as an alternate.
Okay.
So we would, there's a second, there's a motion and a second, so how would we manage that?
Make an amendment?
It would be an amendment, we would throw.
I mean, I don't see the need to vote individually, I mean, I made the motion, and there's a second, so. I don't see the need to withdraw, we can do it individually.
I mean, there's a motion and a second, so, you know, so, yeah, that's fine, we might just vote on them as a group, we can vote on them as a group.
All those in favor of Robert Kimball, Rob Welch, and Ralph Stefanelli being the committee members with George past being the alternate?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm doing it individually, sorry.
Okay, now?
And I'll vote aye. So three to one. And we'll let them know. All right, the next discussion to vote into point, Select Board Representatives for the Host Community Agreements. Currently, right now, we have the chair of the EDC is working, it was cleared through legal that that was appropriate, that she'd be working with Mike Units and the Host Community Agreements. I don't see a need for an appointment of Select Board because it's all of our rights, if any of us want to talk to Mike Units or be part of those conversations, we absolutely can, that's our right to do so, so I don't see why making another layer of bureaucracy.
She actually was not appointed as to negotiate, and the way that it is written is that it's the Select Board and the Town Manager that negotiate the HCA. It's not an appointment, it's actually a member of the Select Board. So that's the reason I brought that up, and that's the reason I brought this up for reconsideration, is Renee, while she was the chair of the EDC, because she was a member of the Select Board, that's why she was working with Mike to negotiate that. The way that the agreement is written is actually, the way that it is written through the marijuana, the understanding of the marijuana and the bylaws, is that it's a member of the Select Board with the Town Manager to negotiate the HTAs.
Okay, well, my understanding, and Mike correct me if I'm wrong, that this was all approved by legal, and there was no problem with it, so.
Yeah, I will check with legal.
You check the bylaws, it's in the bylaws.
Well, then I'm going to ask to move it to the next meeting, and we'll check, and we'll get all the information, so we're all clear.
Madam Chair, I don't think there's been any complaints about the job that Renee's doing, correct?
No, no, it's, again, it's more about semantics. If we by bylaw have to have a Select Board member, then we'll review it, but...
Because my understanding was that it was checked by legal as well, and it was fine, so, but, yeah, if we could get clarification on that before the next meeting.
Was there an email that went out to the group regarding that? Because I didn't see anything from legal saying the interpretation of that.
That was all, that I went and did some digging beforehand, and that was what I was told, so.
Was that sent over to legal?
It wasn't, there was no message, it was just a conversation that I learned.
Yeah, I think this is an E360, just check charter, I mean, if it's either in the charter or it's not in the charter, and I believe, if, do you guys remember?
I'm going to get clarification, and I will bring it and put it on the next agenda.
If we can get that in advance before the meeting, sure.
I just, the reason I'm also for that, it isn't that Renee's doing a poor job, this is an agreement that, with a lot of money based on it, and I, it is my belief that it should be someone from the Select Board that is determining, working and negotiating this with, especially where we're working on one currently, to try to make sure we're maximizing the town, and I think it's a role that, well, it's not a continuous thing, it's project-based, meaning like, okay, we're negotiating...
The supply and the last one right now.
Right now, exactly, but if the liquor license comes, and we decide as a Select Board to add more retail licenses, that's two more HTAs, and these are very, very important things that I think that the Select Board should be involved in, not just getting the document, voting on it, I think they should be working with the Town Manager to determine that. And I believe by law, that's...
No, and again, I think to be clear, what Mike Units and I discussed, there is nothing standing in the way for any of us to have conversation, so again, it's more of, let me just find out the backend, but in terms of, regardless if we appoint someone or not, all of us have the opportunity to have conversations with Mike.
Yeah, now, I think that's understood in general, so.
Okay, all right, I will get all the information, get it out.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, should we have a motion to continue it, or just?
No, it needs a motion.
I didn't think so, okay, I just want to be sure.
All right, we'll just put it, we'll put that on the agenda, look at that. All right, next, do I have a motion to approve the minutes, including, but not limited to, September 21st, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Next, we want to talk about license and permits, we have a vote to approve the one-day beer and wine liquor license to Eli De Silva for a public event at 185 Main Washington Street from 2:00 to 10:00 on Saturday, October 15th, 2022. I want to point out that we want to make, Mike Units and I discussed, that we need to send out a message, I think people are getting a little lax on the 30-day window, and so, there was a great, a great message that, I don't know if you guys all saw it, that other towns have put out about this, that we need to, I mean, again, obviously there's always going to be an exception to the rule, but I think what we want to get back to, now that we're back in person as well, is that we want to enforce, to the extent we can, the 30-day window, and we would ask that they come and are here, are present for when we build on their local license. I think that's important. So we're going to get out some messaging through the website, we're going to talk to Parks and Rec, sort of the bigger users, obviously the rodeo, they use it a lot, and just sort of make sure that people are aware that this is going to be the new rule.
Yeah, because too often, it comes in the week, like the last minute, and then we've got to get police to sign off, fire to sign off, sometimes the building commissioner, and then we get it scheduled.
There's no margin for error either.
Right.
If three of us have the flu, we're not going to be able to, we wouldn't let this one, we wouldn't approve it.
Madam Chair, this has not been added to the E-licensing process? Has this been added to the E-licensing?
No, not yet.
Can we, is it?
It will be.
It will be? Okay, because I think that's, right, either you put the date in, I mean, I'm assuming you can put, if the date's too soon or it's not outside of the, you can't, it won't even let you submit it, right? So it's just kind of one of those...
Great.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so we're going to get more word out, but we still need to vote on this one. This one came through. So do I have, is there any discussion about this one?
No, motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. Announcements.
Like the flyer?
Yeah. It was in last week's, but I don't know if it's re-announcing it or just letting people know about it.
No, I don't know if we have it in here, but we had a Halloween parade.
Yeah, Halloween parade, it's coming up.
Halloween parade is coming up on October 30th, Sunday, from 12 noon, at 12 noon, rain or shine.
So where does it start?
It starts...
Over by like the, right at the very end by Oasis?
You have to say exactly where it starts.
No, by Oasis.
Okay, all the way at the end of 123?
That used to be Planet, whatever it was.
Norton Avenue, Red Line.
Norton Avenue, Red Line.
Mm-hmm.
Goes down to St. Mary's.
Okay, all right, there you go. And registration and donation forms are available.
Yeah, through Parks and Rec.
Through Parks and Rec.
Talk to Frank.
Yeah, Frank's doing a great job, by the way, just on the record, he's doing a fantastic job.
He is.
Yeah, he's been very much on top of it. So, yeah, so it's a great event, everybody should come.
Great. All right, new business. Presentation from Denise Stowe.
We just wanted you to picture, give me the actual picture, we didn't picture from the bullpen.
Tax classification hearing.
This is the explanation, right?
Yeah, it's the explanation of the hearing. I know there's a lot of new board members, so I thought maybe I'd just do a quick overview.
Great.
If you guys have any questions, concerns, you can ask me tonight or ask me over the next couple of weeks. So the classification hearing is going to be on, hopefully, November 9th, if everything goes smoothly. And what the classification hearing is, it's, that night, the board will decide on a split tax rate or a single tax rate. And on that night, that's the night you really have to make that decision, because there are 351 city and towns, all in the same queue, waiting to get approved by the state, so if we have to reschedule, then we might be one of the last ones to get approved, it'll be too tight to get the, you know, the tax bills and everything out. So, does anybody have any questions on, did you get the packet ahead of time?
Yes.
Okay.
I think one of the important things that always kind of took me by surprise when I first spoke with you on the area is, just because you split the tax rate does not increase revenue, and that's the most important thing.
That's the most important thing, it's only shifting the burden to commercial. So, yeah, you're not bringing in any more revenue, we're just shifting it, that's all we're doing. I think a lot of people think you're going to bring in more revenue, but you're not.
Right.
And then you have to keep in mind, you know, it's just not, you know, the big commercial industrial companies, but it's also small commercial people, small businesses, things like that, that do get affected by it, so that's one thing you always want to look at. Usually, we try to be, you know, around 20%, you know, in order to do the shift, but you don't have to be, that's up to you. Right now, from last year, we're at about 18%. I don't have any numbers right now, it's still too early, we won't have those until probably another two weeks or so. That's it, does anybody else have anything that you might want to do?
Madam Chair.
Do you want to go through the packet at all? Do you have any questions in the packet? This is last year's packet, I'll, everything updated, when I get all the numbers in, and then I'll email it to you ahead of time, so that you'll have it before the meeting.
Yeah, as long as we have it ahead of time.
Yeah, as long as I get, it'll be tight, so as long as the state gets back to it and I can get in there, I'll get it out as soon as possible, hopefully, at least two or three days before, if not more.
And is this a separate from our regular meeting, or is this just part of our regular meeting where we vote on it?
It's just part of the regular meeting, right? Yeah, so do it there, and I'll do the whole presentation, go through everything, I'll explain how we get to the tax rate, and then how you have to vote on a few different things that night.
Okay, we should just note, because our regular scheduled meeting is the second, just so you guys know, that we should put on, switch it to the ninth.
The library has something here on the second, so we don't have the room, so.
So we'll do the ninth here.
November 9th.
November 9th, instead of November 2nd. So I'll make sure we put that out.
Too tired from walking in the Halloween parade.
Understood, understood.
Give you a week.
Madam Chair.
Well, is that the day we have to do it, or why is...
Well, that's scheduled, that's the next meeting, otherwise, if we put it off any longer, again...
You can't do it sooner, right?
No, because we won't have our numbers in.
Okay.
So right now, we have our commercial people in town doing all the big stuff, all the commercial now, they'll finish up, they might even be done today, they'll get their numbers in, and we'll start working on that. You know, we have to look at what all the values are, which, you know, this is something we work on all year, but now, we're just getting everything straightened out now, so hopefully, by, I'm planning by the end of October, like, probably like two weeks, we have to get all, that number's into the state, goes into there, that could take a couple of days, they'll review them, if everything's okay, then they'll certify it at that end. If not, then we might have to go back and forth, you know, it's a process. Once that's done, then I can put all the numbers in, get everything out, and then send you guys the packet. And then, we try not to put it off too late, because the bills have to be mailed by the second week of December, so we try to get everything in, it's a tight timeframe, so...
No, that's good for us to know, because everyone just, they're scheduling.
Yeah, so that's why I want to do this tonight, so you would have to make that decision on that night, so.
Okay, great.
And if there's, like I said, any questions or anything, just give me a call, email me, hope it happens and you can say anything.
So, I think she's downplaying what her group does, I just really, you know, so like, they basically go to every house that's sold, check and walk through it, evaluate it, check it, and then do the research to make sure the pricing is in line with what the assessment is, and then they work with an outside group that does the commercial side, so I, my hat's off to you, because I know you downplay what your group does, so. But with that being said, one of the things that I asked for, I know we're at, give or take 18%, that will be determined this, one of the things that I would, and with a target goal of, you know, that 80/20 rule, you know, you shouldn't even really consider it unless you're really, and we tend to fluctuate a little bit, right? I mean, obviously, that's debatable if you...
Right, other towns do different things depending on what's there.
I wanted to, really, we have a lot of TIPS out there, and they brought it up last year. If we took away the TIPS, what would that percentage be?
That I don't know offhand.
And I know it's a hard ask.
Yeah, because every TIP is different every year.
Yep.
So if we took them off completely, I mean, I could probably try to give you an idea what that would be.
Because I tried doing it on a sales spreadsheet, it was nasty, it was, I know, and I would not even attempt to say it was an exact number, but from what I estimate is, we are over 20%.
Could be, could be without the TIPS.
Without the TIPS, we are over 20%, which would, the reason I bring this up to the group is, I really, really want to dig into here, is, obviously, we know what the impact of a split tax rate does to business coming and so forth, but we, residents of this town are about to get some hefty tax bills. And I really, I don't necessarily want to pass it just right to businesses, but I think it's something that we have to exhaust...
It's a careful balance.
It is a careful balance.
We need the business, we're...
Yeah, absolutely, and I get that, but there is no exact math to saying our business is absolutely going to leave, you just would assume higher taxes, right, or approaching the business. But we, if we keep doing TIPS, we're never going to see that, we probably won't see that 20%. And we're at that point where I really think this is one of those things that we look at and we really just kind of debate it, we may not do it this year, we may push it off until next year, but it's one of those things as a group, I would really want to kind of exhaust and say, okay, we debated it, we did everything that I think residents would want us to do on, on, on...
So what I do have, what I did for you also, I put all the pilots together that we have, all the solar pilots and the TIPS, so you guys can look them over. The pilots, that's usually a set fee every year, there's a couple that, you know, that changes, but I'll give you these, I can show one of those. And the other thing is, just to let you know how we do the assessments, you might not even know that, we, we're always two years behind, we always go by what the market's doing, we reassess every year in Massachusetts, we go by the market, so for the FY '23 values, we will be using the sales from 2021, which, obviously, the market's still crazy, so I anticipate the values going up an average of 10%, that's my guess.
But every town's falling, they're 21, everyone's down to 21.
Everybody, every town's doing the same thing, it's, yeah, so just give you that idea. So I put all those together just to let you know when the pilots are done, and when the solar pilots, and when the TIPS are completed. So it gives you an idea of what's going on with those, but yeah, I can get that other number for you, I'll try to work on that without the TIPS, and let you know what that would be.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, because I really, this is a tough, no one likes this, it's not only the Select Board and the Commonwealth likes this decision, but I think that's a real way to look at it and say, because let's just say it's 23%, you take away the TIPS, we're at 23%, I think it's our obligation to really look at it, we split it, even if it's not much, even if it's not too much, we look at it and split it.
Sure.
Also, balance, take away the TIPS, look at all those companies that you don't have in your top 10 anymore.
Wow.
That may not have come.
I think that's a debatable, that is absolutely a debatable thing, Mike, I'm not saying that they wouldn't come, right, and we see this with consultants, right? Consultants say, you know, they come in, they know the game, they know how to negotiate TIPS, you know, I know companies like Nylam Hat Choices, but, you know, we are at a point where we have some attractive, we have two commercial exits, we have a lot of land, we have all these things going for us, and I don't want to stop that growth, but I also, there has to be, we are one of the lowest tax rates in the area. I mean, business or residential, we're one of them, so, you know, I'm going to land the plane there and we'll wait until November, November 9th.
Do we also have any questions? Nope, I think so. Okay, well, again, if you do look it over, if you have any questions, please give me a call and, or email me, whatever you want to do, and go over it.
I just have one question, Horizon Beverage is off now.
They are, yeah, they're done.
They're fresh, they are.
They, I'm not quite sure, I think finished maybe two years ago or last year, but they're off, so these are the last ones that we have. And just on the solar that I gave you, that bottom one highlighted, we do not have a pilot with them, they don't want one, they wouldn't do one, and what happens is, the state tells us that we have to assess them, but then we have, the tax board tells us that they're exempt, so we tax them, and then we abate them every year, until next year, laws have changed, so now we can start collecting on that one.
And...
And that won't be a pilot.
Madam Chair, the numbers that we're seeing are the numbers that you just passed out on Nylam, was what was agreed upon, there was this data agreement, was there a agreement? Have these been adjusted?
No, that's the, that's the, nothing has been adjusted yet, these are all last year's numbers.
Okay, so that's, okay, so that's...
These are all last year's, yeah, we haven't done anything to this year, not yet. And I think that's it, and we, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Is it raining?
It's raining, all right. It's like there's water or something.
Yeah, it's going to be raining.
Just worried about Florida coming into my lap. By the way, thank you for your work.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome, and I'll see you on the ninth.
Ninth, yes.
Maybe.
Thanks, guys.
Great, next, we have a request from the Permanent Building Committee to use the ARPA funds, and I know Brian will be there, Chair of the Committee. Yeah, there's two chairs.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'd like to introduce Steve Kirby, our owner's project manager for the Town Hall and Council on Asian Projects, and Steve is going to lead the discussion, please.
Mike Weedabook?
What's that?
Were you able to get that?
Yes, you want me to share that?
Yes, please.
I do have a hard copy, too, for Charles.
I love hard copies, some called from Teresa.
Yeah, I made them for myself.
Yeah.
Let me find it, Steve.
Again, my name is Steve Kirby, I'm the OPM for both the Town Hall and the Senior Center Project. What we have done, or what we're talking about, or asking tonight is regarding the Town Hall project, Permanent Building Committee has submitted to the board, through the Town Manager, a request for assignment of $700,000 of the ARPA funds for the project, and, you know, ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, there are certain things that those funds are applicable to. We have soft costs of three point six million, which is your architect fees, OPM fees, furniture, fixtures, equipment, testing, anything that's not a general contractor supply item for the project. We have a very small soft cost contingency of two percent of seventy thousand. We've already, we've already reduced that. We've, I'll get into it later, but we've already been doing value engineering and cutting to try and keep within the appropriation. We also have the, the delta on the site acquisition cost. So we get a total cost estimate right now of twenty-three nine sixty-one. Our appropriation is twenty-three two ninety. So at this time, our, we're over budget by six hundred seventy-one thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars. Again, this is, these are estimates, they're going to, going to change as we design more, but I need to at least present what, what we have today.
Do you want us to wait to ask questions at the end, or do you want to do one building at one time?
Yes, please. Wait till the end.
The next. So I'm anticipating questions, or why are we over budget? Initially, the funds were appropriated in, in the spring of twenty twenty-one. You know, we're now eighteen plus or minus months beyond that, you know, going into final design and, you know, in a few months, heading towards bid. So there's, there's almost a year and a half of, of a gap. And what has occurred in that year and a half? I think we, we all understand that inflation has really affected everything. And in construction, pre-pandemic yearly inflation escalation, equal word, it's two to, three to five percent year to year. We are now tracking ten to twelve percent inflation in construction per year, basically one percent every month. And this isn't just on Norton jobs, it's, it's on all of our projects that we're dealing with right now. I'm going through the same type of discussions in other municipalities, value engineering, finding other funds. You know, and why is that? Pandemic impact, supply chain delays, you know, I think we've all heard of, of things that you just can't get. Generators that used to be a very standard item are now fifty-two, fifty-four weeks from, from release of order. Overseas suppliers, that's always a problem, getting things from, from China, light fixtures, electronics, anything that has a chip in it. And material pricing, it's gone up. Some things have come down, but nothing's going to come down to pre-pandemic crisis at this point. And prevailing wage for the, for the labor, that increases regardless of, of what's going on now. That's, that's a yearly increase always. So you can, you can bank on that. Excuse me. Permanent Building Committee and the design team have been implementing ongoing value engineering for both projects to, to try and, and keep the cost within the appropriated budget. You know, a big example of originally, the Town Hall was going to be a brick clad building. We are now down to a, a fiber cement siding material just because of trying to save costs without impacting square footage of the building. Because we've gone through the program, we know how much, how large the building has to be and the function of the building. You know, it's, it's easy to reduce costs by, by cutting out sections of the building, but if you're taking a department out, they have to go somewhere else. So the, those, those are some of the reasons why and, and what we've been trying to do to stay with, within our budget. So what, what I'm looking for now, thanks, Mike. Our estimate right now for the water service is a hundred ninety-six thousand dollars and change. That sewer septic service is estimated at four hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, which gives us that subtotal of six hundred seventy-one one forty-one, that I showed earlier. Our broadband, which is, which is going to be, you know, our, our internet services coming into the building, that twenty-eight thousand dollars, that's just the delta between the water and sewer and, and the seven hundred thousand dollar request. One thing that came up just this week, the water department is requiring a water loop throughout the project, which isn't exactly what, what we had originally designed. So we're going to be looking into that. We have a call with them next week to go over the particulars on that. But that may add cost back into that, that water service number. That's why I put the asterisk up there. But we'll work into, you know, to the, the requirements that the water department wants to make sure that we're serving the Town Hall and, and tying into the other buildings that we are somewhat building a little bit of a, a Town Hall campus center. So essentially, that's, that's our, our issue, our, what about, a, a challenge that we're dealing with. And we're bringing it to you as a board to ask questions and hopefully approve our request.
My first question, is that actually that seven hundred thousand, does that actually replace what you're over budget? I mean, or is it, that's additional needs? I mean, because where is it coming out of in the total budget project?
Okay, that seven hundred thousand would be adding to the appropriated amount.
Okay. I'm sure. I've got a bunch of questions if you would, if it would be all right if I, and then you can just start me up for saying.
Yeah.
Mike, we have approximately seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars left of ARPA funds?
I believe seven eighteen.
Seven eighteen, with the other fifteen, I'm just kidding. So seven eighteen. So you, you kind of addressed it. My big, my biggest concern necessarily, obviously, that the six seventy-one is a big, is a concern. And my biggest concern is, is this the same building, both of the, and we're not talking to the senior, we're just talking to Town Hall. Is this the same building that was proposed for the debt exclusion? You know, obviously, before we were talking about a cement building or a brick building, and I apologize if I'm misquoting the material, which was a long span life building where, and I know fiber cement, I've been already done my research and talked about fiber cement is, it's, it's new, but is it going to be, instead of a hundred year building, I don't know, it's a hundred year building, it's a fifty year building. Is this the same building that the citizens voted the, the debt exclusion on?
To answer that question, I'd say that is the same building because the, the intent was to have all of your, your departments in, in one building with, with enough room to, to operate. And that, that is, this building, as it is designed, is meeting that requirement. The materials on the outside have changed, but we're still, we're still designing a building for long term life. It's, it's not, it's not a building that's, that in, in twenty years, you're going to have to start pulling siding off of it and replacing it. Obviously, there's maintenance on a building, there's maintenance on any building, even if you have a, a major building, you have, you have things that you have to maintain. But your, your, your building function is the same as what was presented in twenty twenty.
Just to add to, to my question, has the useful life changed from originally to, to now?
Just the amount of maintenance that will be required in the exterior of the building in the future.
Do we have any estimates on, on that?
We, we have, well, one, one of the items that, and I don't have it with me here, but when we changed the siding, that was one of the questions that came up from the B C. Okay, we, we're going to have a, a siding material now that's going to need paint in seven to ten years. What, what's, what's the cost on that? So there, there will be, you know, I guess basically an operating budget that, that we can get from, from the designers and from the, also from the mechanical engineers, because you have, you know, a, a much better heating system, but that's also going to have operating costs. So that's something that we can get from the.
Yeah, that's something I'd definitely like to see, the, the additional operating cost from the changes and venture.
And this is more towards the, this more question's more towards the chair of the Permanent Building Committee. I understand your commitment as a group was never to go back to the voters and ask for more money. Are you guys getting to a point where you're, you're, you're cutting so much that it's putting the product, I know that you're doing the best you can, and you're saying, okay, we're going to replace this, this is a reasonable replacement. Are we getting to a point where we just have, either have to either stop or go back and ask for more money? I mean, is it, are we getting to that point where, where cutting, doing cuts and replacements that we're not really building what we thought we were going to build?
I would say no. I would agree. I, I just listening in on our, the, the Permanent Building Committee meetings, you know, it's, it's not about, we're not, we're not just throwing sort of crap out there, we're actually really thinking thoughtfully. And I've been part of the conversations that I've been intimately involved in with the community center, the senior community center. And, you know, it's, there's a lot of things that we're thinking about that. And I know that these guys have been put so much labor and intensive to these meetings about, for example, parking. At one point, we weren't sure we could surface the whole, you know, senior center. We ended up finding the money for it, but, because we didn't do it, you know, in the old building. But the point is, we were thinking ahead, saying, okay, well, what can we do to like preset the lighting? So if eventually we do resurface areas. So there are, everyone's being, I think, really creative, but we're not going to deliver, you know, a subpar product. And I agree, going back to the, the town, I think we, I think we, people would lose their minds.
If I might, to answer your question, the building that, in the buildings that we are delivering are what we told the community we would deliver in the form of a building. They may not be getting brand new furniture within the building, but the program space and the office space and the meeting space are exactly what we, we said. You may have to drag some desks over. You may have to do, this council on aging is doing some fundraising to get an upgraded kitchen, you know, that wasn't in the budget from the beginning, but they, they've decided so they're fundraising to, to get that. But the building integrity and the program space are exactly what the voters asked for. We've had to be very sharp with our pencils and very creative, but it's.
I've watched every meeting. I, I have this habit, I give a pass on Netflix and go to YouTube and watch meetings. I really need a life, but you guys have done a great job, and I don't mean to take away from that. It's just, I'm watching and then watching the deliberations, it's very concerning to me. And, and I know it's nothing that, it's not a fault of this committee and board, it's just the times that we're living in of, of expense. And, and I get that. This isn't just us, we really know, we say, oh, we want new, new doors, we want these expensive doors, we want new furniture. That isn't what this is.
But Michael, the longer we wait, the prices are keep going up. So prices go up.
That's always, we, we run into it in many other towns, again, before the, before the pandemic, before the issues we have now. Town waits a couple of years, they're paying, they're paying more money. It never goes down.
I, I get that, but at what point does it, I mean, I would disagree with you a little bit. After a wait, it did go down. Even building, even construction for a short window, and then it just been after in twenty ten, boom, done. But, I mean, what says, you, you're saying a ten to twelve percent per year inflation within construction?
That's what we're tracking right now. And I can only speak for right now. I'd love to say, you know, in, in August of next year, it'll be my plus, but I can't say that because I can't tell you something that may not happen. I gotta give you somewhat the worst case all the time. It's sort of my job.
Yeah, so if I could just add on to that, you know, I completely agree. I actually do think it's going to continue well. So to, to add to Mike's question, I don't think it's a fault of any of yours or anything like that. But do you see a point where it gets so much that you, you're going to have to come back to the town for money? And of no fault of your own, just because of the cost increases and things.
There is no fault. I, I will say that.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think, I mean.
I guess that's what, that's what, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think we're placing blame on anything. I'm just saying, you know, because the costs are rising and, and everything is, is going up so high, do you think that that might happen?
Well, we're currently going out to bid for the Council on Aging, hopefully the end of this month.
Yeah, we're, we're looking to get these out to bid by the end of this year, both of them by the end of this year.
Both of them, so the Town Hall is.
So the, the constructions will be probably going on at the same time. There might be a little bit of a stagger. But the way to sort of curb the, the escalation percentage is to get it out to be, get, get our bids in and then lock, lock in our, our contractor. And, you know, I don't want to sound overly optimistic, but sometimes you, you get saving, the bid savings on bid day. And that can be, you know, put back into a contingency or, or set aside. I mean, there's nothing to say that we have to spend all the contingency on, on a project. It's just there for contingency purposes.
But also, you know, by going out to bid, once we get our numbers back, we'll know exactly where we are. And if it's doable, it's doable. If not, then you go back to the town and say, it's not doable. You don't go back before you know what your numbers are.
Yeah, so the question was more of what you're, what you're estimating. I mean, my profession is property management, so I, I understand, you know, you go out to bid and it can't be higher, so. So I just, ballpark, I wouldn't hold you to it, that's all.
We're building in alternates into the, into the, into the bid, bid forms also, so there's, there's potential items that we can accept or not accept, depending on how the, how the bids come in. So, you know, there may be a little bit of room there, but the, you know, the quicker we get out to bid, again, we're, we're looking at the senior center, you know, by the end of this month, so that we have, we have bids by, you know, roughly the beginning of December. It's usually a six week period, and then Town Hall will be out there.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that these are estimates. We haven't gone out to bid yet. And I have always liked that quote by that wise man, Steve Kirby, I think it was, that said, the estimators aren't bidding the project to win the project. The estimators are giving us what they think is a possibility that could be the price. So until we go out to bid, we don't know.
They, they, that's exactly, I do say that quite often. They, they're, they're, the cost estimators are giving us numbers so that we have a, an adequate budget to work from. Because it'd be very easy for them to try and quote unquote, win the job, say, it's going to cost this, and when the bids don't come in that, then we're looking at them saying, you told us this, this is what it's going to be going to cost. So, you know, the issue of having bid day savings, you know, is always something that you, you hope that you can capture.
You're so cute that you believe there's bid day savings. That's, I don't believe that.
My, my concern is always something like, you know, what, what happened with the sewer projects is that, you know, you get one price and then it just escalates to ridiculous amounts.
So that, that goes to, now let's talk about the ARPA funds specifically. We, I know we've talked about it, we moved on from tying in with North Cottage, right? That is not a feasible option. We exhausted that, that is not an option. And repairing their system is not an option to tie in at a low rate.
Top the table.
Okay. What is a water loop? I've been around the water department a lot, and I've heard that people complain about this. What is a water loop?
Essentially, it's, it's a water line that, that comes into the, into the, you know, it's a lot of subdivisions or, or larger stores, but in this time, we have a town offices complex with D P W police. That, that water line's going to come in and it basically goes back out to the main and the buildings are, are tied in off of that loop. And it's, and they're, they're looking to run an eight inch water loop in, into the, into the parcel.
And that's a new requirement?
It's not a requirement, it's a discussion point.
We just received it before.
I'd love to have them come here and discuss it.
What they're looking, so there's a water main that goes into the highway complex, the highway garage, and they're looking for us to tap into that and then come back out onto East Main up by the new hydrant that we just put in.
And there's a stub in.
So I would assume that some of the water department funds would, would cover that. So we can discuss that.
That was my next question to the town manager. Can the water enterprise account through the, the Water Commission? Is there discounts that they could do or funds that they could add by their, their choice, obviously, because they're an independent.
And that's a new requirement?
It's not a requirement, it's a discussion point.
We just received it before.
I'd love to have them come here and discuss it.
What they're looking, so there's a water main that goes into the highway complex, the highway garage, and they're looking for us to tap into that and then come back out onto East Main up by the new hydrant that we just put in.
And there's a stub in front of the road.
So I would assume that some of the water department funds would, would cover that. So we can discuss that.
That was my next question to the town manager. Can the water enterprise account through the, um, the water commission? Is there discounts that they could do or funds that they could add by their, their choice, obviously, because they're an independent enterprise account? I know this would be unprecedented of them, um, but is that, is that a discussion or is that a question that can be asked of the water board?
It can be asked when we meet with them, but I wouldn't think that would be a possibility in the enterprise account. But I think we need to have the discussion on why we need to do this, do this loop to begin with, but that's.
And the loop's value, the loop itself is how much?
We don't know.
We don't know. It just came up this week. So the, the number that I have there is, is basically a straight water service coming in up the road to the building. The building, it is set back from the, from the road. And it, and that water is a two inch domestic and a six inch fire line for the sprinkler system.
Is that, is that amount in addition to what was originally estimated or is that just the whole amount?
The?
For the water service? Because at some point, there was a water service estimate, correct, for the buildings?
Yeah, the, the water service estimate right now is, is the 196, not including the water loop.
So I guess my question is, this wasn't part of the original amount requested by the town?
The original appropriation?
Yeah.
Yeah, the original appropriation had the, the water line coming in off the street, yes. It's just that, at that point, the estimate, the, at that point, it was a feasibility estimate, I believe, was, was overall lower. So I'm, I'm picking on the water in the sewer only because it applies to ARPA funds.
North, North Cottage was a consideration.
Yeah, yeah. And the same thing with the sewer as well?
Correct.
Madam Chair, the question with the town manager. Um, the town manager, obviously this would use up all the ARPA funds if they'd be gone. Is there, and which I'm fine with, with doing it, is your comfortability of using the, the ARPA funds, getting, bringing them down to zero this early in, we had till 2026 to use that money?
Um, my, well, what I would like to do first is check with Bristol County and see if we can use.
For county, county ARPA money?
Because we have 900,000 left in the county ARPA money, so I'd like to check with them before we use the 700.
We have 900,000, we have 900,000, I thought the full water project took all that money? There was 900,000 left in the county fund?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have that in your packets?
Yeah, there's 962.
Yeah. But this probably being a water improvement system, you would think that it would qualify probably for the county because this is typically is a general rule with an ARPA, this is.
I would hope so.
Except it's new, that's the only thing.
I, I lean toward, towards waiting to find out.
It's part of new construction.
It's actually, but especially the loop would be in addition from a line that's already existing that would feed the rest of the facilities.
So, you know, if you just commit to, um, the building committee that we're not going to spend that 700,000 on anything else, we're going to hold it for now until we find out from the county, so.
Oh, school might grab it. I think we already got an email about that.
So, yeah, I think it's, uh, we're voting on this, correct? When was there, was that the?
I'd like to find out from the water department about the loop and how much that, that's going to cost and what we can do to maybe abate that, if possible.
But regardless, this would still be the 700,000.
The 700,000 with.
So that, we can still have that discussion with them, that does nothing to do with what they're looking for right now.
The, um, Madam, um, the town manager, the enterprise account of water and sewer, even though it's really no tied, it doesn't, this, this question doesn't act as this, does that 1.4 million give a take? Does that sound right? 1.3?
I have that one.
By the way, if you have this and I'm right, listen, this.
I think you're close, actually.
I think, I think, I think it's 1, 1.6.
Who?
Go ahead.
That's my figure.
You can tell us.
The water enterprise is 2.4.
Sorry, I apologize, I, I misspoke, I underspoke. Are they charging the town a connection fee?
We haven't come across that yet, but we'll discuss it next week.
2.2, you said? Wasn't that?
2.4.
2.4, okay.
Do we have any more discussion on this before we move to a vote? And I, I could, I'd like to make a motion to, to vote to approve the ARPA funds allocated, the 700,000, with the town manager's discretion to work with the county ARPA funds, so.
I think we just, you just modify your, to say that it first, consider first consideration is the county funds and then the?
Do I have a motion?
Uh, so moved. Madam Chair, sorry, I'm so moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much for the work you do.
Now build the damn thing.
We're trying.
All right, we got, we got to move along here. We got a discussion and/or vote to eliminate the two hour parking limit at the town common. Chris Pernock, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes.
Is the developer for the old town library and?
Hey sir, nice to meet you. I just met you as well.
Take the floor.
Have a copy here for you folks. Again, this is, we, we're taking on the project with the library, we're currently working with National Historic.
Not National, Norton Historic.
Well, that too, that too. We, uh, we're working with, um, we're going through Mass Historic to, um, to apply for all the necessary or hopefully incentives that they allow throughout the, throughout the rehab process of the building. Um, I've been speaking to Peg Dooley all along the way, informing her every, every step of the way. Um, and, um, so what, what I did here for you folks is, I just wanted to, what we're looking to do here is, I, I gave you a, a plan of what we're going to be filing with the ZBA. Um, we have not done that yet, we're, we're in the process of getting all that together. We will be asking them for a, a parking variance because, you know, in, in, in keeping in, in tone with the, with the new VCC zoning, um, they, they want to see that all the parking is on the side or the back of the building. So this is, you know, this site's very, very, very difficult, it's such a small site. So I think we've come up with a good plan to get 10 spaces on site. We can't get 11, we can't, you know, we're really pushing it to get 10 on site. Um, what we're asking here is if, um, the, the parking across the way, and you'll see on the second, on the diagram there, um, and you, you may, you might know this, but there are currently 15 spaces at the common that are never used. I mean, we're there all the time and they're always empty. So we don't have a tenant yet for the building, except, you know, we, um, we've had a lot of interest with people looking to, like, we've had high-end bakeries that want to go in there, um, some other, some other businesses we don't want in there, trying to keep in, you know, what, what the town's whole perspective with the VCC zoning was, walkability, people to come walking to the site and what have you. And we can, something like that would certainly be a, a good idea. We don't have anything confirmed as of yet, but we can't get any more than 10 spaces on site. Um, the 15 spaces across the way at the, at the green, like I mentioned, they're never used. So all we're asking is, there's a, right now, there's one sign up there, there's, I think there's just one sign, two hour limit. So if we have, whoever goes in that building, if they go in there and they have somebody parking over there, you know, the idea is to run out before they get a ticket or, we're just looking to have, take the sign down so that they can park there as, you know, as long as they're in the building, I guess, without having to worry about leaving. We will be asking for, for, um, from the ZBA, less parking, because we just can't fit a baseball square foot into the building. Um, so that's a, that's another process. I've gone over this ahead of meeting with all the department heads. Um, they're on board with everything we're doing thus far and they helped us out with giving us a few, um, comments about what we filed for the plan with the ZBA. Um, so that's basically it. We're just looking to take the sign down to allow, just in case, people park on that side.
I wonder if that was originally put up for, so you wouldn't get Wheaton students?
Yeah, Wheaton students will park over there.
And I, I just wanted to bring it up if I could, um, with Chris and CFS, an issue with it, the fleet chief has asked that we post no overnight parking.
Great.
Which should be an issue.
Not at all. And we're also working with Mass DOT because we have to create this curve cut now on 140. And, you know, everything's been filed and done, but that takes time to get that information back to them, so, um, you know, we're looking to open up the site, we got to move the pillar to the side to get this entrance in there. So we have a lot of work ahead of us with the site, um, you know, from just a little bit of work we're going to do on it, so. Uh, but that's, that's fine, Mike, no overnight parking is not, not an issue. It's really based upon whoever goes in there, if they have patrons that want to park over there, then they'll be able to do that without worrying about getting a ticket.
Yeah, my concern is what's going to happen is Wheaton students or, or faculty are just going to park there, and not overnight, but all day.
If they see no.
If they see no overnight, yeah, they have it because it's, it's two hour right now, so, um, that would be my concern.
It looks like there's plenty of parking though around, like, I'm just looking at this aerial.
There are lots.
I mean.
It's not, it's not a lot of parking there, it is a whole, uh, it's not.
No, I meant for Wheaton.
Oh, for Wheaton, yeah, 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 yeah.
So there's no need for them to park right there.
Right, right, like, there's a huge lot right here.
Yeah, for me, don't you tell me where I can park.
There's lots here, there's a lot, there's a big lot over here.
It's a, it's a difficult site because what we, what I tried to do was, I tried to go to the people on both sides. And the people on the corner, the middle of the morning, they're, they're great people, they're, they really work with us. Um, we worked out the sewer situation with them. Um, they wouldn't allow us to buy anything on their side because we figured if we can get parking, buy some of their land to do this, that we can get parking there. Uh, when I, when I was working with Mikey Giuseppe, he, I had, I had asked him, the people on the, on the other side, um, if we could buy some of their land in the back of, you know, to have more parking in the back, he said, it's out of the VCC zone.
Yeah.
The library ends the VCC zone, so that, you couldn't use that.
So, so let me ask you this, have you approached the new buyers on the corner, those corner property?
Yes.
About doing a joint path to the parking lot behind, um, as you know, there's a community parking lot behind Bog Iron. I'm not sure if you know this.
I do know that.
There's community parking lot there.
Yeah, that would go back.
And it's, it's a distance, but I'm wondering if it's, if you, because those lands, I know that they probably met, cross over to the Fernandez properties, but I'm wondering if there's a way to jointly get to that, just as an overflow, just in case.
You know, honestly, Mike, I, I really think that they, I'm not sure they would like people walking through, because the way that the property is, I don't know how we could.
Yeah, there's a lot of triangles, there's a lot of triangle points there.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, and, and they've been awesome, they really work with us big time with the sewer issue, um, so.
Chris, may I suggest, what if we just made it like three or four hour parking, just to deter the Wheaton spokes? No one's going to stay longer than four hours. Well, they shouldn't.
Yeah. I mean, I don't see why that wouldn't work, that wouldn't work.
You can do four hour and, and no overnight parking.
Put meters in there that go up to four hours, I mean.
That's a, that's a really good idea.
It just, it avoids the, what we're trying.
I don't think PEGs don't want meters on that property.
No, I wouldn't do meters.
I'd rather not do meters because then they're going to, they're going to run out.
Yeah. And I, I would suggest too that you don't change it until you get, but we approve it, but whatever the time, and then that way, it happens all at once, so people aren't seeing it, kind of like figuring out what's going on.
So Madam Chair, um, so I know, and I know this isn't on the scope that you're showing us, I was under the, so the other property that you purchased down the road off of the, off of Taunton Avenue, there are no good secrets in Norton.
No, 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 it's on Taunton Avenue. The, the other bank, the other property purchased is the old bank. It's, right now, it's student housing.
Oh, it's the bank next to, it's the bank next to.
Next to the church.
I thought it was the Nicholas, the, um.
Number five.
Yes.
Same owner, Jack Nicholas, Nicholas.
Nicholas.
He owned both of the properties.
You didn't buy that, you didn't want to buy that one?
I bought the other one. I bought this one because I like the VCC zone. And really, ultimately speaking, I know I have to go through a lot of hoops, it's not around the game yet because the, I, I inherited a lease with students, four students from Wheaton. And they've already been paying gaps, to be honest with you, but, you know, it is what it is.
No.
And, uh, but I inherited it, so I'm just working through it till June. Um, but my, my ultimate goal there, and I will work with Peg and I will make sure everything goes, I want to knock that building down and do the VCC zoning, that makes use building. You know, the re, first level retail, condos or apartments, whatever, whatever we end up doing upstairs, residential, commercial, that's my ultimate goal with that. So I bought that, I bought that August, August 1st, um, with the understanding that if I had to use the parking there.
You could overflow.
I could do that because the VCC zone allows 800, 800 feet or closer to your business. So the library, this is only 100 and some odd feet. So if I had to, I could create parking behind that building. Because right now, they have a, they, they take up a lot of the area with a, with a septic system and we're just going to tie in the sewer and we ultimately do the project, so we can have all that for parking. So if we needed it, we have an overflow parking if we needed it. But, you know, we don't know what's going in there yet, so into the library yet, so that's, that's another option for us if we need it. I mean, if you have a bakery or something like that in there, you don't need, you know, I don't think you've got much more parking down the street. So it's still an unknown, we don't know who's going in there, but.
If you want an option, so.
Exactly, exactly. And when we filed with the ZBA, um, we are looking to, you know, ask them for a relief on parking because we've really matched the site of what you can do there for parking. You know, so even, even if we do that, yeah, with, you know, four hour limit or something like, that's a big difference in two hours.
Yeah, I, I say we can, we can take a vote on, a motion to vote on extending it to four hour parking with a no overnight.
Perfect.
And if we could just wait till we figure out when to come back, we'll say we've approved it and go.
So more importantly, I'm going to ask a bigger question. They, police don't even have a mechanism, it's not in our bylaws to ticket parking, street, street ticket parking, I don't even think it's in our bylaws. Am I mistaken in this?
Mistaken in the wire.
I mean, I mean, that's, you know, something, you know, I don't think it's in our bylaws to ticket a car.
Doing it the right way, I know we want to have.
I mean, I don't even think we, I don't even think we have a mechanism to, to ticket a car.
No, we do, they're all going to get ticketed. Well, that's very, you know, a patron wouldn't know that though.
Yeah.
They wouldn't know that, so, you know, we're just looking to make it, so even though that's not dedicated parking for us, we understand that, it's just a matter of having more overflow or more people to come back there. I don't know, we can't get any more space on that site.
So Madam Chair, do you want to vote on this tonight or do you want to just wait till they come back from ZBA?
No, I want to just vote on it tonight, that we'll approve the four hour, um, sign and the no overnight parking.
Perfect. With approval, with approval from the ZBA.
Pending approval from the ZBA.
Pending approval.
Um, that has nothing to do with it.
No.
Yeah, they don't do signs.
Yeah, they do the sign.
So, so for four hours.
So Mike, we had an approval for where he was parking from ZBA, but.
Second?
We'd like to go.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?[1657.12]
For four hours and.
So Mike, we had an approval for where he was parking from ZBA, but.
Second?
We'd like to go.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Great.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Are you master plan, you're following the master, you, you familiar with the master plan and all that?
Oh, yeah.
We also just formed the traffic committee. And one of the things in the traffic committee, one of the things the traffic committee is to look at is straightening out.
I just drew that.
I, I just drew it right here. It's easy, it's done.
Well, you know, we've been, we've been trying to go after the, talk to the church, would they ever be interested in selling, you know, nobody even calls them back.
Let me just tell you this right now, they're not going to call you back, but the nodder just didn't sound like.
I mean, I would, it's a beautiful building, but it's just, you know, trying to figure out, maybe fix a lot of things, but.
They have a very large endowment, they work off of.
All right, well, thank you, Chris, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
We'll see you again.
We'll do it, we can do that.
Thank you.
All right, discussion and our vote to approve the sale and execution of sale documents for bonds.
Oh, yeah. Wow, this is like a tour.
All right, take it away, Paul.
All right. We went out the bid today on both short term notes and bonds. Some of these we had bans, we already had notes on, some of them we didn't, and, you know, the $25 million were, we are actually bonding, so we're locking in rates now, won't fully get any higher. So we did pretty good, actually, with the ban. That was over $2 million. We ended up with five different bidders, and we ended up with net interest cost of So the key point on that, I think, is we do like 4.5, because we got a premium with it. So we were happy with that. What's entailed in these are the wealths, number five and number six. There's a couple of different pieces of that, like 1.5 million is most of it was, and then more on the window door payers to the various school buildings. And we also, the bonds, we went over $25 million in bonds. And we ended up with 14 different bids, 3.89911 was the interest net interest cost, which was very good. And the, there was like a million dollar premium on that. So we can use that to lower the, like, the closing costs, if you will, associated with that. We can use that to pay that in, towards the interest later on. So we were pleased with that as well. This is for a lot of things that were banned and some things that were newer. We're talking about the energy improvements at the school buildings, the athletic fields, some excluded debt, a couple of different pieces of that, as well as land acquisition and land acquisition for recreational purposes, as well as the water. So there you're getting a lot of, a lot of projects locked in, so which is good. All right, what I need from folks tonight is for a vote of the select board, this is part of the process. Like I said, this, this is all pre-authorized, the town meetings, so nothing is new. But there is a process when you go through the bonding, that the select board takes a vote, and the clerk certifies that vote. This is the form of it here. And did, were you able to get this in email? I'm not sure.
Yeah. He has to read it all, that's.
The clerk has to read it all, yes, unfortunately. And then you vote on it, and I'm going to ask the clerk of the select board to sign off on that. The last piece of that is for everybody to sign. And that, we don't have the paperwork, because we only had the sale actually today, so we can't get the bond counsel and financial advisors and everybody to get all that paperwork together. So that will be coming in the next couple of days, I guess, and we'll let you know by email if you could come to town hall and sign off on all that, and then we can finalize that and put a bone in it. So if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not mine at all. All right.
What's your bond rating at this point, do you know?
Do I have to read all the columns?
Does he have to read all the columns, Mike?
Yes.
I don't think you need to read all that.
Okay, no, no.
All right.
And then all this stuff. Got it. All right. Definitely, definitely time for a bathroom break. All right. Here we go. I, the clerk of the select board of the town of Norton, Massachusetts, the town certified that had a meeting of the board held October 5th, 2022, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, at which a quorum was present.
Excuse me, isn't today the 6th?
It's the 5th.
Today's the 5th.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Are you going to make me start over?
No, you're going to. Sorry.
All right. If you don't mind. I'll start. I, the clerk of the select board of the town of Norton, Massachusetts, the town certified that had a meeting of the board held October 5th, 2022, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the sale of $24,295,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2022 bonds of the town dated October 19, 2022, the bonds, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of $25,780,527.23, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on October 15th of the year and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows.
Just reference the chart below.
Reference in the chart below, thanks, Michael. Further voted that the bonds maturing on October 15, 2052, the quote term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows, referenced in the table below. Further voted to approve the sale of $2,148,590.425% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated October 20, 2022, and payable October 20, 2023. The note to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at par and accrued interest, accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $20,712.41. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale of preliminary official statement dated September 28, 2022, and a final official statement dated October 5, 2022, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale of preliminary official statement dated September 28, 2022, and a final, and a final official statement dated October 5, 2022, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town, upon such terms and conditions are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure and subsequent events undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertakings shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures, in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents related to the bonds and the notes collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission set, shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions, and to execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, time, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general, as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, Section 2B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds or the note were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law. Let us see again.
Chapter.
Chapter, thank you. Chapter 30A, Sections 18 to 25 as amended, dated October 5, 2022, clerk of the select board.
Could you read subsection 2 again?
I missed that first part.
Motion, motion to, no, we already voted on this.
Do we?
No.
No, we did.
Motion to approve said red document from the clerk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then you'll just email us about this.
Yep.
If you just come in with that's all ready, and then we'd be good to go.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, discussion in our vote to approve the conservation's restriction regarding zero noise street.
So this was a development where they had to cross a wetland to develop the site, and as part of that decision, they agreed to put the remainder of the land under a conservation restriction, and that's not, that's how they got their approval. So now the conservation commission is asking that you vote to accept that restriction.
Any discussion?
When was this done originally? Because the, the association was created in 1989, so.
I thought there was something in the documentation that said this was kind of old. Is that correct?
Well, the, the association was, was developed in 1989, so that's why I was just asking about.
So Mike, they want to, they want to be able to have access to cross the wetlands, and then they'll surrender all the land surrounding.
Well, this is, all already happened, yeah.
They got, they got, they got permission to cross the wetlands, and now as part of that, the deal, they had to agree to put a conservation restriction on the remaining land to leave it open.
Recreation land or conservation, you mean, is it a recreation land used, or is it a conservation restriction?
It's a conservation restriction.
I'm okay with it. My only question is if this was from back in 1989, why it takes so long? That's my only question.
Yeah, I would have to.
Because in my head, I think 1990 is not that long ago, but really it's 32 years ago.
From just speaking to, and I don't want to speak for him on this matter, there's a lot of these, and I know agent conservation, agent conservation.
Director.
Director, thank you, director. Conservation director is catching up on some things that were, I mean, I don't want to speak for this, this is a particular case, but he is catching up on this. He's, he's doing a great job.
No, I'm just, I'm delighted to see it. I just, I just didn't know if there was a reason or if it was just, yeah.
That would make sense.
That makes sense, yeah.
Sort of make his life easier, and if he's, if he's recommending it, so should we make a motion?
Yeah, he, I mean, he's working, he's working.
Sorry.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Is there any other business anyone has?
Do we have that to sign?
No. Oh, no, but we're not going to have that until later on. All right, whole business review and vote on fall annual town meeting articles and sign the board.
All right. So the finance committee has finished all their business, and Article 2 is separation expense, and the finance committee has voted to recommend that $70,168 come from free cash to cover separation expenses, one in the treasurer collector's office, and two or three in the fire department chief's hiding over there. So this, what this covers is, one thing it covers is here, you earn your vacation, so if, say, you retire in July, you've earned four weeks of vacation from the previous year, so it would be four weeks vacation that you'd be getting paid for. And then, like in the fire department, they're eligible to accumulate 360 shifts of sick time, and they're able to buy, get paid back for 50%, so 180 shifts of sick time. And so this is, covers the retirement of the deputy chief, the last payment of the retirement of the former chief, and one other retirement in the department.
So do we go, does anyone have any questions? Can we approve all? Or go one by one?
Just vote to approve Article 2 separation expense with $70,168 coming from free cash.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve separation expenses, Article 2 on the fall town meeting, for $70,168 coming paid out of free cash.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next article is Article 3, and Article 3 is operating budget amendments, and I'll go through them. I'll just tell you that the finance committee recommended the operating budget amendments of $1,205,751, with 907,433 coming from free cash, and $298,318 raise and appropriate. And the reason for that raise and appropriate, that is money to pay the borrowing costs, the additional borrowing costs that we just talked about, and that is part of the debt exclusion. That's for the senior community center and the athletic fields. And the other items on the list are town manager, 2,700 salary, town manager, 1,000 expense, treasurer, 7,500 salary, and 4,000 expense, data processing, 10,000 expense. This is a new program that the treasurer collector and the town accountant are updating their ZOBO software, and police salary overtime, 60, uh, 44,000, excuse me, and police educational assistance, 20,000, fire overtime, 66,000, sailor weights and measures expense, $7. They went up for the first time in years. And we contract with the state for that. And not public schools, 116,301. Bristol County assessment, we have an additional tuition, so it's the tuition plus the assessment for the cost of the construction project they have going on, is based on the amount of students, so that's $8,557. Highway expense, 8,100 for a new compressor, and then the interest that I talked to you about, the short term interest, 46,561, and then the long term interest, 561,025. And miscellaneous insurance, $10,000.
Mike, how come the 8,000 didn't go to CapEx for the compressor?
Say that again.
The 8,000, why didn't it go to, why didn't it go to CapEx? Or is that, does that go to capital, capital?
Yeah, it would have to have been a $10,000 expense, otherwise it'd be in capital.
Okay, all right. And the police overtime is variable, the police education is variable, obviously the 20K is, they didn't expect that because of the new state requirements. The fire overtime is variable. The schools transportation, that's for the bus contract, that's not a variable expense, that's a fixed expense. Why is that falling into the fall meeting?
Because in the spring, the budget was enough to cover the transportation until October, and then once, with this additional money, it covers it for the rest of the year. But they only, the money that was appropriated in the spring, they said would only be enough to get them to October.
So I guess my, Madam Chair, I guess my question is, I understand the expense there, it's a fixed contract. They knew this expense was here. I mean, we couldn't have said that we're going to have and need additional $66,000 in overtime in police or fire, or that the education, you'd know that. So I, why are we mixing variable expenses with fixed expenses? I guess, that's my, and I know that this, I, I know, and I watched the FinCom meeting, I get it, but I don't understand why we're mixing variable, which is typically what we're doing in the fall, versus, versus the spring year.
The only logic there would be that the school gets, we just. The only logic there would be that the school gets, we just appropriate a lump sum to the schools. It's up to the schools to decide how they spend that money. And I guess the logic there would be that over the summer, they have time to look at their budget and see if they have any savings. And maybe they didn't have a tuition that they thought they were going to have or something like that. And they wouldn't need any more money if they would have been able to cover the transportation expense. So they look through the summer and then they come back and say, we, we just can't make it without this additional money.
So I guess they might.
I mean, is it also about like when people are signing up the buses? I know they say to sign them, they don't know, you know, when people are.
I guess I have a bigger question than, obviously, this, we know that free cash has been certified for the fall meeting. How much, do you, how much did the police churn back last year?
I don't know. I would have.
They churned back money. They did churn back money, correct?
How'd it happen? I don't know. Did fire?
Don't worry, that question's coming back. That question's coming back, so we got to.
So last year, the total churnbacks were 1,63,116. Let me see if I have it broken down by.
So what are you trying to get at?
I'm trying to understand, so variable, like, fall meeting is about variable expenses. And from what I understand, police and fire have taken that, they didn't know what that was, but they end up churning back money. So in a way, this, the school, from what I understand, has not churned back money in years. So I guess they just keep, they're coming back for variable expenses now with, on a fixed expense. And they're not churning back any money. They're finding ways to spend that extra money during COVID. So every, every department saved money in COVID. The school didn't save any money and churn anybody back to town. So I guess, you know, I mean, it's, it's funny because I bring this, some of this stuff up and I sound like I'm anti-school and I'm not. But it seems like they, they can just never get enough. And I guess that problematic that the Finance Committee, and I'm curious, you know, I don't think the Finance Committee has addressed these issues enough with the school to say, this is a fixed expense. Everything else on there is a variable expense. Because if that's the case, well, let's just front load the contract, let's front load the budget in April. Let's just, just do that and not do variable expense, try to do variable expenses in the fall.
Public safety churned back 129,000. Last year.
129.
That would be both.
Both. Right? And that, if you look at it, that's exactly, I mean, give or take, that's almost what they're asking for. So it, there's, there's imbalance within the, within the town budget that nobody's talking about. And I, I don't know how to address it because we can't get into the particulars of the school budget, but there is an imbalance here. And I, I don't, I don't know what to say. And I, and I sound like I'm anti-school, but I feel like they, they saw the police coming back there for variable expenses. Like, oh, no, no, let's just make a fix because it's a variable expense and no one's called out for bad behavior.
Well, we don't know that it's bad behavior. Why, why would we call them out for bad behavior?
Because they knew. Because they knew what the expense was in the spring meeting.
Okay, but that doesn't mean that it's bad behavior. It just means maybe just need, somebody needs to ask the question.
But we.
We need, if we need an explanation for why they need the money that they knew need in the fall meeting, then let's ask them for the explanation.
I will surrender that, that probably is a bad statement to say bad behavior. But it, the mixing, it seems like they're just like, oh, they're, they're trying to say, okay, we're just going to throw that a fixed expense. They knew what the expense was. Why isn't that in the spring meet, why isn't that in the spring meeting?
That, that's a good question. I mean, that's, that's a valid question.
They was a contrast.
So, so again, I think that's something we just asked, right?
I, I guess I'm a little sensitive too and just because, I know the school sent out an email to the, to every resident in this town saying that their budget was cut, when their budget was not cut. And I, and I think that was, I think it was some poorly written wording in a, in a social media post to it or tied to a social media post. And so maybe I'm a little sensitive to, to the subject now because of that.
Okay. Point taken, I think, and we've talked about this before, I think there does need to be at some point. And, you know, we do need to bring all the parties together and just have a frank conversation. And we have the ability to ask questions. Because I know other folks that I've talked to, you know, we're just, we're all learning, we all have our little areas, but we have to sort of learn how all the pieces fit together. So I don't know what form that takes, if it's a select board meeting where we ask representatives to come to that.
I would like, I mean, I would like to find out why it was, I don't want to say purposely understated, but if it was understated in, in the spring and it's a fixed expense, it should have been there for the year. So it could have been, I'm not saying there was anything nefarious by any means.
Right, but you're only looking at one side of the, of the balance sheet. It, it could have been a revenue problem, which is what Mike was saying. That, you know, let's say they were expecting X amount of students for, for school choice. And they didn't get that money. So maybe that's why they were asking for it. So you're saying, you're saying it's, you're saying it's a fixed expense.
But is it a variable income?
It's a variable expense though, when it's not.
You shouldn't be budgeting variable income on operational budget.
That's what we need to ask.
But we'll, we'll just ask this question.
Yeah, there's no, there's no answer. I mean, that, it's just a question to ask.
I guess this is the, the challenge that, that we have as a board, right? We've got the Council on Aging that hasn't really gotten a serious bump in a while. We have Parks and Rec that have not gotten a serious bump in a while. And we've got, there, there are a couple of departments here in town that have gotten an increase year over year when, when some other service departments have not gotten bumps. So it's just, I see this and I, I just, I'm very frustrated by it because, I'm not saying, I'm frustrated because obviously I would love to fully fund every department, schools, I would love to do that. But we, I think we're just limited here and I, I guess I just don't understand why, how we knew the expense was in the spring. And I'll surrender that. And that, it's, it's almost like, oh, this is a surprise. Which the fall meeting has always been used traditionally for variable expenses, things we couldn't estimate.
This would be a great topic for a finance, joint finance, school and us committee meeting. And again, I'm not sure, we talked about trying to pull something together, but maybe unfortunately.
We've talked a lot about it.
But it'll be after budget, I mean, you know, there's, there's just constraints here, like what we can do, so.
Right, because I think, I think we have to ask the school, like, you honestly have no money to churn back. Every department seems to have it.
All right, so we'll, we'll.
You don't have any money to churn back?
I think we, we need a presentation and we'll get, have some questions answered.
Thank you, thank you. And I apologize that I was vehemently debating this. It's just something that's.
We still need to vote on Article Three. Can you give me the right wording? Does someone have the right wording?
It is Article Three. To appropriate nine, it's 100, 1,205,751 with 907,433 from free cash and 298,318 raise and appropriate.
I didn't write it down.
298,318.
It's on.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to, if you recommend, correct? To recommend 1.1,205,751 from free cash.
907. From free cash.
From free cash. And raise and appropriate 900, or 200, 298,318.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay, thank you.
The next article that you have to vote on is Article Six, Capital Improvement Funding. And the recommendation is that $800,000 from free cash be placed into the Capital Improvement Fund.
Any discussion? All right, I'd like to make a motion on Article, to recommend Article Six to move 800,000 from free cash to capital improvements.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. The next item is Article Eleven, the Personal Bylaws. And I can just show you the easier. So the Finance Committee voted to recommend the following salary schedule with the current on the left and the proposed are on the right. And so this would be for three, the next three years. The Finance Committee was supportive and, you know, their concern was that we make sure we keep up with some room on a high end because of the current labor market. You know, if we have to hire someone and we're in a situation where we have to pay more money, that we have the room to do that. This is Article.
Anyone have questions?
Mike, how, how does this relate to, some of these are union amendments?
None of these are.
None of these are union.
These are, these are the wage and salary personnel. So these are the people that don't have contracts or aren't in union.
Madam Chair. So we've talked about benchmarking, we've talked about salary studies. We've talked about this for several years at this point. Where are we with that? I know last year we brought together four towns, five towns that were comparable towns. Have we done any analysis on where they are within these, these ranges?
So the only towns that have responded so far these four towns. So to give you an idea of where they are.
So of the towns that we, we compare ourselves, we don't consider, Swansea and Westbridge aren't there, but Rockland is absolutely on that list, so it's a fox bar.
Foxborough is too.
Yeah. Where are we with them? So let me see, Office Administrator.
So if you take, if you take Rockland the actual and Foxborough, the actual for the Office Administrator this year, 73,299 and 75,752. And.
So we're within the two towns that fell into that comparison, we're within the range, acceptable range with it.
Right. And then the next assistant to the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, 137 in Foxborough, 101,99 in Rockland. And so our range is 75 to 119, so.
And right now, are there any employees that are on this list that are currently employed that are not within the current range, they're below the current range?
No. No, anyone that has to be within that.
And this is, no, no one's going to be bumped up, no one's going to be bumped up or brought down.
Brought down, no, no, I know.
If they leave, if they leave, we have the ability now to.
So nobody's outside of the current range, okay.
Do you have a motion to approve Article Eleven, the Personal Bylaws?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Article Twelve, Creation of a Finance Appointing Committee. The Finance Committee did not recommend, they had zero in support, nine against, one supported it. I know you were taking up whether to put this on the warrant or not, but you haven't voted on this article. This is a petition article.
Discussion, if we discuss this at length, unless there's any.
I think we do, whether we, no.
No, if, if there's any discussion.
No, I was just trying to think, the vote that we took, wouldn't that have been the vote?
No, the vote was to put it on the warrant.
Right, so this is to endorse, so I'll, I'll move to endorse.
Right. So do I have a motion?
Yes.
His motion is to recommend Article.
To recommend.
To recommend. Do you want a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Thank you. The next article is a zoning bylaw amendment. This was a petition article also. And we've spoken to the petitioner on a number of occasions and I promised that he's going to show up for the Finance Committee and show up here, but he's not here tonight. So unless he is known, so I can just give you a brief explanation of the article.
I'm not going to approve it if he hasn't shown up to both the things you've requested to show up to present to me.
And the planning board did not recommend. What the article is, is in the, in the town bylaw, under R60 and R80, if you have in those residential zones, five acres or more, you can have large-scale solar on the property. And it also sets the setback requirement, 75 front, 50 side and ramp. And so the petitioner is looking to do that in our 40 as well with the 75 and the 50 setback requirement.
As, as of right, not.
Special apartments.
Special apartments.
It still would have to go through the process, yeah.
And it's supposed to be a five-acre minimum, is that right?
What was the planning board vote?
No.
No.
Yeah, but was it unanimous now?
No.
It was like one to six, I think.
One voted to support, six against. And there, the summary of the issues regarding the solar article, the concerns were noise that comes from the solar panels. Most of the developable R40 zone areas are small lots. Most of Norton allow solar or have to apply for a special permit. Our 40 is designated for residential development. Density of our 40 zone and the difficulty of being able to deny a solar facility in our 40 if this was approved at town meeting.
That last one, difficulty to deny, was that, was that what they said?
Yeah.
Special permit they can deny, a special permit, I mean.
They can, they can deny it, but if, you know, they're.
Yeah, I mean, they can appeal the, to deny.
But it'll be appealed, yeah. And we've, I, I, when I was on the planning board, we went through the same thing ourselves, yeah, it's, it's very difficult to deny.
All right, is there any other discussion on this?
The Finance Committee voted two in favor and eight opposed.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to, can I say not recommend?
If you have to.
Bill, this has to be a positive.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to recommend Article 13 to allow large-scale ground-mounted solar, what is that word?
Skip that.
Installations in the residential 40 zone district by special permit.
Second.
Well, you have to move it, she can.
Oh, I'm sorry, move.
No, you said second.
Yeah, you made that.
Yeah, you can't make the motion, no, as a chair.
Oh, someone moved it.
So moved.
Someone moved it.
Okay, my second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
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 Next article is Article 14, and this is our OPEB, other post employment benefits, which is retiring health insurance. And the finance committee voted to recommend 115,000 from free cash for the OPEB fund. It's an increase of 5,000 over last year. And, you know, we did discuss that we're trying to gradually get up to what we said in our financial policy that will put 200,000 a year in our OPEB. And so movement in the right direction. And I, I think this might have been one of the reasons that we got a double A plus again when we went up to borrow because we are committed to OPEB.
Any discussion? I'd like to make a motion to approve Article 14 to move 115,000 from free cash to the OPEB fund.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the last article, stabilization, and the finance committee voted to recommend that $200,000 be moved from free cash into the stabilization fund.
Any questions?
So moved.
No, any questions? All right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve or to recommend Article 15 to move 200,000 from free cash to the stabilization fund.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We have a town meeting.
All right. So that was, we were going to get, we were going to have him come, right? So we're not doing that.
What is that?
All right. Let's move quickly. Now we've got to go to our executive session. But Mike, do you have, let's do their town manager report and then I'll do select board report, ma'am.
Just quickly, I just wanted to talk about the opioid settlement funds. So this year, we're going to receive two payments. We've already received one of 33,000. And we will be receiving another payment of the same amount this year. And the.
Of 33,000, Mike?
What's that?
Of 33,000?
Another one of 33,000. Yep.
So 66.
66,000 this year. And the note met this week and they came up, I gave you a list of different things they want to use the money for. And we did have a discussion with town council. We're trying to figure out how to put an article together. And it was too late to get anything done for this meeting. The problem is that the DOR is saying that this is general fund revenue and has to go in the general fund and be appropriated for the purpose. And, you know, even town council's like, that's crazy because there's only so many things you can spend that money on. So, so we'll be looking at possibly in the future, setting up an account for this, the opioid money. I know right now, I've talked with the chiefs and the town accountant. You know, like the fire department's looking for 5,000 to buy Narcan. They could buy that now out of their expense. And then once we get an article in May, we can.
Transfer.
Transfer the money out of the grant. We're calling it a grant into that. So. It's, and it'll be money continuing for a number of years. So.
Nine years. I thought it was 107. Why, why was the number 107 in my head for this year? Because it's like, we gave, we got a million dollars given to it and over nine years, it's about 111.
33,331. And, well, I'm talking calendar year, so we'll.
Gotcha.
Not physical.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And just, we had a meeting today on the paving, believe it or not, on 123.
Is that an issue? What's wrong?
Well, and it's, it's only going to be from Elm to the hump. So for now. So anyways, just to, we'll let everybody know that they're going to start working at night. And they'll be milling and paving October 12th to October 13th. There'll be milling. So they'll be doing one lane at a time. So it'll only be one lane. Between October 17th and the 18th, they'll be raising structures and leveling. And all this setup will be at eight at night and the work will be from nine to five in the morning. And then on October 23rd, 24th, the planning is to pave. But we, they may be coming back to you. I've asked them to put together a plan to shut the road down and be able to do it in one night rather than two nights. So we will bake for a better pavement and it would get done quicker.
Where, where is it?
They're looking at setting up the detour, going to police department, get everything ironed out and then coming back to you. And that plan makes sense.
And you mentioned now that they're going to go from 495 to the hump. I'm sorry.
From Elm Street, Pine and Elm to the hump.
Okay, Pine and Elm to the hump.
And then they'll just be, you know, Keith was adamant that they have to do some repair work on the road on the other side because it's not going to survive through the winter. So they'll be doing some, hopefully better patch work in there. And hopefully, Varus continues and gets their work done so they can get rid of that poor working in the central north and south Washington.
Select board report, ma'am. Does anyone have anything?
No, just a lot of calls. And then Mike, Mike's, Mike and Jim were helpful. We had a lot of calls about just questions on residents regarding the bike trail. And just kind of got them in touch with Jen. Jen's been so great in getting back to them and, and so forth. So.
Thank you, Jim.
And I had, I had some questions come to me at my last office hours about the Pine Street development, but I'll bring them.
All right. Anyone have a paper?
I have it there. I have it there because I'm a clerk.
That's right.
Here, read it.
Okay, but you have to read this part. That's by the chair.
I declare under.
We'll do the remarks first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you.
Let's skip the warrants.
Let's skip the warrants. I approve the payroll and invoice warrants as printed in tonight's agenda.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
All right. I declare under General Log, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, that the purpose of the executive session will be to discuss with town council strategy with respect to the following pending collective bargaining or litigation matters where any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and with the board to not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Carol, this is Carol Advertising LLC and ESA E-Portfolio LLC versus the Town of Norton Select Board Playboard and through its members and American Outdoor Advertising Company, Two LLC, Super School Security Corp.,
I feel like you just made that up.
I feel like I did too. And be a memory of an agreement between the Town of Norton and National Association of Five Rivers. Local 2678 and.
I move that the board go into executive session under General Log, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, for purposes and reasons declared by the chair and with the board to not return to open session thereafter.
Second.
Do you have a little call? Meg Tool?
Aye.
Steve Hornsby?
Aye.
Kevin Snyder?
Aye.
Megan, I am an I.